All right, we will go ahead and open the Planning Commission meeting for February 2nd, 2023 at 6:30. We'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll go ahead and go over to Angela for a roll call of our commissioners.
Commissioner Wood.
Present.
Commissioner Melcher.
Here.
Commissioner Walthius.
Hello.
Commissioner Parker.
Here.
Commissioner Journey.
Present.
And Commissioner Branson.
All right, so this is the portion of our meeting open for public comment. Anybody wishing to address the commission on, in any regard to anything that's not on tonight's agenda. As there is none, we will move on to meeting minutes for January 19th, 2023. Does anybody have any corrections?
Angela, I have a comment.
Okay.
On Mr. Kingsbury. When he introduced himself, he gave a street address, but I don't think he said the city. And if you look up that address, it's actually Lebanon. And if you look at their heading on his application.
Oh, Bill Ruby's, okay.
Yeah.
Kingsbury, Lebanon. And it's weird because Kingsbury's off of Mountain Home, which is behind Liberty Road. It seems like.
Yeah.
Yeah, and an application I have at my desk for him actually says Sweet Home. So I, so I will go and verify, I'll go verify that.
The zip code for that address is 97355.
Okay.
Which is Lebanon.
That's Lebanon.
For sure.
Okay, I'll go look it up. Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes of January 19th, 2023 as amended.
Do I go to speak? A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. So moving on, we have, we're going to open the public hearing for application LA 22-02 in regards to our mobile food cart units. We will open the public hearing at 6:34. This legislative amendment, LA 2202, consists of the new Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter 17.75, Mobile Food Cart Units, or MFU. And a revision to the following sections and subsections, 17.16020, 17.818.020, 17.20.020, The proposed text amendments were identified by the city staff based on a frequent request to install MFUs and the lack of code to support the installation. So the applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by the statements are evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties the opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Borse, Land, whoa, Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Do any of our planning commissioners have any personal bias in regards to this legislative amendment?
You do not.
No. No, I have none. Any conflicts of interest?
No.
No, I do not either. Any expertise information?
No.
No.
All right. So, a little bit different, so with the, yeah, we'll just go right to the staff report. We don't have any kind of applicant for this.
Did you open the public hearing?
I did, at 6:34.
I didn't hear, okay, thank you.
Yes.
I know why I didn't hear that. Thank you.
Yep.
So no, we don't really have a staff report for it, so just as kind of a background, this is technically for mobile food units that want to be permanently placed, not ones that are going to be here for a day and then leave into short term. So this is more of a provision for ones that want to come in and settle here. You know, it has the different criteria for having to be electricity and gray water and that type of thing. So if you want to, we could read through it, or we could just discuss it if you've already reviewed it.
So establishing a food court, this would kind of apply?
This is a food, so it says MFU, so mobile food unit and food unit pods, the pod is a court. That's what the pod is.
So it has to be movable, correct? This is, this is all things that are temporary, must be on wheels, able to be moved.
So the, the mobile food unit is obviously, it's in the name, it's mobile. The, the rules are for really the site where the mobile food unit is placed.
Okay.
So this is not something that would regulate, you know, when you think of big cities and you have a hot dog stand or a food truck that's on the street, this isn't really going to affect that because those are essentially only regulated by the health department and then by parking code. You know, if they have a, there's a spare place to park and in the right of way, they can park there and do their thing. But they're self-contained. This, when you have a specific place where a mobile food unit would park and then connect to power, connect to water, connect to wastewater, and set out tables and amenities for people to patronize that business, it becomes more of a destination that people come to, that's when this would really kick in. And so the pod is, is like a group of mobile food units, but it does, it does cover a single mobile food unit if it's, if it's intended that that single mobile food unit would be on a specific property more or less permanently, or swapped out for another, for a different one on a regular basis, but there would always be one there. That's kind of the idea, is to have some minimum standards for the site development for a use like that. Because if you, you don't regulate it at all, and you have a number of mobile food units that park in a parking lot and are there more or less permanently, you're going to have negative effects of that development because it's a parking lot, it's not designed for people to be eating. There's the question of how they get rid of sewage, are they moving them in and out constantly to dump their sewage? How is power being provided? Are their ADA, are they, are they ADA accessible? You know, with their tables and, and the walkways, can people with wheelchairs get through to them? And then there's a matter, of course, of restrooms. When you have a, a eating establishment, for a restaurant, those restrooms are required, obviously, but if you have people spending time for a long period of time outside at a mobile food unit, you require restrooms for that development. And essentially what we're saying with these rules is, yes, we think it's appropriate that, that if you're going to have a more or less permanent gathering of mobile food units, you should, it should be ADA accessible, it shouldn't be an eyesore, it should have bathrooms that are not temporary chemical toilets, but actual real bathrooms. And there should be measures in place to ensure that the units are properly connected to utilities. There's even a provision where if they don't connect to power but have a generator instead, that generator should be far enough away from the eating areas and from the units themselves that the fumes from the generator, the noise from the generator don't cause a problem. Likewise, they don't cause a problem for neighboring properties either. So that's the, the intent behind the ordinance, and we can, like Angela said, we can read through all the provisions and explain what the thought process was behind it, but this, I kind of want to hear from, from you on what you'd like to know and what concerns you might have.
Is this different than Albany and Lebanon's in any way? And what, what are those differences?
Well, I took Albany and Lebanon's and used them as a template and kind of mixed them. So this is a mixture of the two of them. I based it off of kind of the size of our city and our needs for that, and so it is kind of, we took, Albany was, was written by their code enforcement officer, and so, and I don't, I didn't ask who Lebanon's is, I just knew because our code enforcement officer got the information for me. And so we went through and we kind of looked at our city size, and I had our code enforcement officer look through it. Director Larson looked through it, and so did I, and we kind of went through and just decided on what would be best. And, you know, a good example, if you think about it, Sweet Hawaiian, they have set up on a lot, and so that's kind of what we're looking for is, is regular, the criteria for that type of situation. And we have had some other people have interest in coming here. And so we wanted to make sure that besides, I mean, they have to follow the health guidelines, and that's kind of not us right now, they have to do what's called a transient merchant application, which doesn't cover a lot of the, you know, water, sewer, wastewater, that type of connection to it. So we wanted to just, it's a popular thing, we just wanted to make sure that we are covering our bases with that.
Any, any changes that we made to what we found from Lebanon and Albany were mainly changes based on conforming with our existing code and our, and our existing way of doing things to kind of modify their process to, to fit ours, but also just to look at whether the requirements were areas we really needed to get into. I think they had some that were a little bit more stringent when account came to design standards and, and the requirements, you know, the required amenities. And we were mainly looking to make it as easy a process as possible and not to be overly burdensome on the, on the applicant. Mainly look at ADA accessibility, the, how, how trash and, and utilities would be handled, and ensuring that, that it was, you know, an attractive place, but not really dictating much when it came to size or colors or anything like that. Mainly looking at it from health and safety standpoint.
What process did Sweet Hawaiian go through to establish their location there?
That was frustrating because we didn't have a code in place.
Right.
We kind of adapted what we had to.
Yeah, so mostly it was kind of like we do with any other structure, we did the building permit process. And so, because it was one parcel, so we did it as if a structure was going in the building. Now granted, this is a mobile unit, so it was a little bit different because we hadn't had that before, but that's exactly the same thing. They had to come in with a site plan, which they'll have to do with these also, if it's a permanent, they'll have to bring in the site plan, have to show their connectivity, parking, just kind of demonstrate everything on the plan. This, the benefit to having code to go with it is now there's a checklist that they can go through. We kind of had to go through our criteria, both planning and building, and figure out what applied because we hadn't had any mobile units yet, and so, and we don't technically allow mobile housing either, so it's, we had to figure out because it's a restaurant. And so we just had to adapt what we had. And so this will give us an actual checklist now that we can go through and apply building and funding code with it now that we have it, well, if we get it approved.
Yeah. I had.
We've got a.
Can you take your microphone?
Mic, please.
I'm sorry, we've got a big spectrum. At one end is Albany and Lebanon, which is pretty appropriately done, there's a dining hall and restrooms, and I think that would be the ideal. We've got a couple already in Sweet Home that are probably going to be affected somehow or other by what we do, or they're be grandfathered in, I don't know. On the other extreme, you know, somebody can push a cart down the sidewalk and sell hot dogs, I could do in New York City, for Polish hot dogs. So I, I think we need to think in terms of each one of these circumstances and see what effect this proposal is going to have.
So when it comes to the existing, existing food trucks in Sweet Home, those that are in place right now, unless that use stops for a period of time, they're going to be allowed to continue that use and it'll be fine. When it comes to somebody with a cart on the street, this isn't really going to affect them either, unless they want to camp out at the same exact spot on private property every single day. That's, that's the only time when this is really going to be triggered.
And it states that specifically in this code as well?
If, if Sweet Hawaiian, or if a development like what Sweet Hawaiian has, or the, the other taco truck has, if one of those were to come in and be a single unit on a single property, the only additional requirement, there would be a permit, but essentially the, what Sweet Hawaiian has now is basically what would have to be followed. The only changes, I think, are maybe an increase in pavement, because theirs is mostly gravel lot, we're requiring more ADA accessibility when it comes to hard surfaces, but not very much more than that. Most of the rules here in this ordinance are for a collection of mobile food units. When you have a developer who wants to have several spots where mobile food units can come in and park and lease a space, then you're going, then it's going to trigger, okay, if you have an eating area, this is how the eating area is handled. If you have, you know, this is how utilities need to be connected to, and then, you know, we're requiring that they be connected to utilities, not, not a, you know, fill up and then leave and dump and come back. And then the bathrooms is probably the most, when it comes to the cost of a development, I would say probably the, the bathroom requirement is going to be one of the larger parts because they are going to need an actual, they need, need actual ADA accessible bathroom facilities.
So on that, is, are, are we looking, I can't find it right now, but the difference between one unit on one piece of property versus several units on a piece of property?
So that's in the, in the definitions.
Yeah, can there be something, though, that, I mean, I'm just thinking of Sweet Hawaiian, if someone recreates that type of setup, they're going to have to build a structure, have it plumbed in for actual toilet, or do we allow a chemical toilet for one pod on one piece of property, one MFU? And then once you go beyond that, you're required to have an actual flush toilet? I mean, you can get chemical toilets that are ADA compliant. I just, I'm just wondering what kind of, I mean, most people are doing, food trucks are doing it as kind of a test run to see if the area can support, and they're looking for the cheaper option, and if they're going to have to bill out, you know, 20 grand to build a single stall bathroom on that property?
Right. Well, and that's, so that single mobile food unit is not going to need to build a bathroom, like, I need to refresh my memory on this, but when you're having a standalone unit, if it's by itself.
So we've allowed for the single currently to have a portable restroom.
Okay.
For one, single one, and I'm pretty sure that's how we left it. It's when you get more than one.
Yeah, no, I, I completely agree with that. I just, I was looking through it and I couldn't quite find it. I think I read something about it, but I can't relocate it.
I'm still.
And then I had one other quick question, too, and this is bouncing around a little bit. So in the MFU standards under, in the general, page 48, so it says, shall not have the wheels removed. Can we, can we maybe modify that? And I'm only saying this because I've seen some of those that they lower them to allow for easier access for the consumer, to where we could say, can't remove the axles. A lot of people will take the tires off to lower them, and it's kind of a theft preventative measure as well, just to get, you know, because you can drop the whole unit if, just by taking the tires off.
Certainly, anything can be modified on this if.
Yeah.
It's the wish of the commission. This is a draft, and so it's, it's meant to, we're, we're not claiming to be any experts here.
Right.
The, the intent behind not having the wheels removed is that the structural integrity and the, the mobility of the unit is preserved.
Right.
Because.
And I like that, too.
Once you change that, it tends to, it tends to affect the appearance, it affects the operation of it, and so you don't want to have a mess every time you have to reassemble or whatever.
Yeah, I, I like the idea, too, it states that the tongues of the trailers and all that, I'm like, all the towing connections have to stay on site.
Right, and so if there's a something, a different way of doing it that you'd like to see, that's certainly.
I've just, I've seen a few, and this is just an observation, where they have removed the tires to lower the unit, and then they've skirted in the trailer to kind of sanitize, it keeps things from crawling around underneath of it, too. But I just didn't know if that, if that might be an option or something we'd be willing to look at.
That's, that's up for.
Just as far as reach, I'm thinking, I, I've seen a person in a wheelchair go up to one of the food carts, it's quite a hike on most of them for them to get up there, and usually most all the food cart operators come out and deliver the food down to them, and so it's not a huge deal, but I don't know how, some people can take it a little negatively, being waited on when they want to be an independent individual, so.
And really, we're trying to have as light a hand as possible with a lot of this.
Absolutely.
We're certainly open to any changes you'd like to see when it comes to that. But back on the previous question, just to report, I don't think that there's actually a requirement for restrooms for a single mobile food unit. There are, I'm not saying, but there's, like I said, there's a, there's a lower threshold.
So we, so under 177509084, we have, so this is for the application, it says a copy of the MFU's restroom agreement as required by Lynn County if no restroom is provided on site.
Right, so that, that basically points to a health department requirement.
Okay.
And so we're, we're only saying if, if health department requires you to have a restroom, if you're a single mobile food unit.
Then you've got to have it.
Then you follow their rules.
Okay.
I'm fine deferring to.
Couple of comments. Probably for the last 20 years, the Rotary Club has had a hamburger booth, but we've had it various events. Thank goodness we don't have it anymore now, we all got tired of it. But there was talk from time to time there to let the air out of the tires. So we're dealing with examples that have been real. Let's see, what else am I going to say? And we use a different event without restrooms, and we need to think in terms also of some of the events where there are multiple.
So if you don't, if you don't mind, I'll stop you right there, there is an exemption for special events.
Yeah.
So this is not talking about taking your hamburger trailer or tent, putting up your tent or whatever in Sankey Park at the harvest festival.
And also farmer's market is excluded, correct?
Yeah, those aren't, those aren't included in this. If there's a, there's a downtown festival that is part of a larger event, it wouldn't be included in this. Those are seen as temporary, temporary events where it's a, it's a weekend at the most. This is talking, this is, those are all exempt from the provisions of this code.
This code is specifically for mobile food units that want to set up shop on a specific property to stay there.
Correct.
Yeah, on the long term.
Nothing that's going to be moving regularly or, yeah, that they would be moving often. I mean, to me, I think that having, although the wheels removed may lower it slightly, most of, you know, most windows on a food truck aren't ADA accessible in any way. So asking them to keep their wheels on and inflated so that if, in an emergency, the city needed them to move, because they should be able to move, you know, rather rapidly. So I don't see, you know, any reason for that. I did have a question about the, the umbrellas and covering structures. It says that they would need to be brought inside during, like, hours out of operation, and I'm just wondering if there is, is that the part two? Jeez, what section are we in? 1775.001, Section E, Number Two? Where it says, like, structures should comply with local and state agency regulations, is that about if they want to build a permanent cover and structure? Because it looks like we have lots of things about, like, umbrellas and tents, and that they would need to take them down, they'd need to stay in working order.
What section are you in?
Page five. Page five, yeah.
110.
110E.
Sorry. I wasn't.
So I think the, the, when tents, when temporary items like tents and umbrellas are left outside exposed to the elements permanently and are never taken in, they tend to wear out quickly and become an eyesore. When they are regularly removed or stored and then erected again, they typically are maintained in good working order. And so that's kind of the intent behind them, is to prevent an eyesore from occurring.
Yeah.
Of course, if a permanent structure were to be developed as part of this, it would have to go through the regular building code process, and building code would look at the safety of that structure and how it's designed, it would have to meet those standards. But building code doesn't apply to tents and umbrellas, so the intent is mainly to ensure there's some level of safety and maintenance with those things.
That makes sense. I just wanted to make sure there was some, that there was a possibility for permanent structures, because those tend to be, you know, the most appealing.
Right.
For mobile food pods and.
We also have other development code that talks about what it would, it's technically open storage, but those businesses that have retail, they can put their stuff out during business hours and then need to bring it back in, so that would kind of qualify if it's a temporary kind of umbrella situation, plus the wind has a tendency to get wild here every once in a while.
No, I like that the temporary structures have to be taken down, that, I'm glad that's in the code. I just want to make sure permanent structures had.
It makes it less of a target for vandalism, for people who are trying to hide and that kind of thing, keep it open visually from the street as much as possible.
Does this involve any land use review and notice to surrounding business owners? That an owner wants to establish this type of use on their property? Or they just fill out the application, provide the materials, and it's?
So it has to still be in a commercial zone.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's considered still a restaurant type area, so it still has to be zoned commercial. So if it's in a zone that outright permits, you know, restaurants, then no, it doesn't need to be noticed.
Okay.
It's, yeah, this is, this is implementing it as an outright permitted use in commercial areas, not a conditional use, or anything that would trigger that kind of.
So the property owner gets a permit to allow the units, to create a pod, to allow units to locate on the pod area?
Right, they wouldn't, and they, and they, there wouldn't be a public hearing over it.
Okay, yeah. And that permit, is there any subsequent permits for each individual truck to come in or cart to come in?
The idea is that the, if you have a pod, if you have a collection of them, then there's somebody running that main operation.
Okay.
And the permit would be for that person, and then all the individual units would come and go as they make deals with the owner of that property.
Yeah.
And they would, of course, you know, the health department regulates those on the inside.
Yeah.
So they're going to have to meet those standards.
Right.
But the, the idea was that we don't really want to force the tenants to have their own permit, we'd rather just work with the owner of the development or the manager of the development and have just a permit for that.
Yeah.
Now, if any of them are on their own, at a single, a single unit on a single property, then yes, they would sell.
Okay.
Does the health department address this very much?
Health department is, is, and again, I'm not an expert on their operations, but they're mostly concerned about the, the health safety of the, of the, how the, whether the unit is capable of serving food in a healthy manner. And that's primarily the interior of the, of the food trucks, so food carts, and how, whether they are clean and been inspected regularly, et cetera. I think the only thing exterior to the, the food trucks that, that. I think the only thing exterior to the, the food trucks that, that the, uh, health department will be concerned about would be bathrooms. So this, we're trying not to get into their business too much with this and just defer to that.
And typically even with the transient merchant application, I have the, um, food cart owners, the ones that have done it. They give me a copy of their, um, like a temporary license permit and they're showing that they passed all of their health inspections. So they usually get me a copy of that and I keep it in the file. Um, so I have not created the permits yet because I'm waiting for us to get through this, um, first, and then I will be creating the permits. So one will be for a single pod or a single unit, and then the other permit will be for a pod. So it will specifically list a checklist. Um, it will probably have some health department regulations checking in there, but, it's easier for me not to do that. That's all we're done. And then I can kind of draft it according to what the code's going to be.
So when they submit a site plan, is there going to be a certain amount of open space required for gathering and eating based upon how many they are putting in that area?
I don't think we, we didn't require a, uh, an amount of seats or space necessarily. There, I think there's some separation standards, aren't there?
There is, and you have to have, be able to, for like sweet Hawaiian spots. So we had, you know, the parking regulations. We still have to kind of go, have to ever for parking. The other part of it is traffic flow. So cars have got to be able to pull in and out of there. And so anytime anybody has, um, come to us and shown us a piece of property, asked us, you know, what they could do there. We just have to make sure that there's, you know, safety for traffic flow, uh, for pedestrians, um, parking. I mean, most of these like, um, are very quick stops. You're not going to stay and eat forever. So.
The big, the big thing that covers that area though, is the ADA accessibility requirement.
Okay.
Cause whenever you make sure that the pathways of a development are ADA accessible, you're basically requiring all the paths to be at least three feet wide, um, to accommodate a wheelchair. And, and so if, if you imagine everywhere that somebody would go, uh, within the development, you're going to have, that, that guarantees that the space in between tables is at least three feet. The spaces in between tables and, and food and the units themselves is going to be at least three feet. The, you know, the bathroom, uh, access and so forth is all going to have that, those, uh, those widths involved. And so their plan is going to have to show that, that they can accommodate, um, for ADA accessible, accessibility reasons.
Will there be allowed any alcohol sales?
That's not something that we, that we've really contemplated. It's, we basically were assuming that this would be the same as any restaurant. And so we don't, in our land use rules with restaurants now, we don't get into alcohol. And so we haven't gotten into it.
Do you have to have the same permits as from OLCC and the health department as everybody else? So they still have to be permitted. So that's more, is going to fall on the health department and OLCC for that than it.
And they would help, be held to a certain number of units based on their site plan at original time of application.
Yeah, they're going to have their own, applicate, their own permit that they'll apply, apply for with OLCC on that. And I, I know that, um, OLCC will have requirements on the eating areas and where alcohol can be consumed. That it's got to be a, a, a clear space that, that, um, is, is marked in some way as being the area where alcohol is being consumed. So people aren't noticed.
And as far as, you know, density, like in a pod situation, um, they still have to comply with, um, lot coverage requirements, setback requirements. So all of that's still going to be required, um, for the lot size and the zone that it's in. So.
So like in the down, in the main, you know, central commercial zone, it could be fairly dense. But the main thing we'll be looking for is that circulation, whether they have the space to be able to handle.
Okay.
And in addition to that though, if, if they're approved based on their site plan for ten, and all of a sudden somebody drives by one day and there's an eleven, I mean, obviously that's a code enforcement issue.
Well, then, then they're, they're risking losing their permit for the whole thing and, and shutting down the whole development. So I'd imagine they would be hesitant to do.
They could come in for a modification request?
Right. They'd have to modify.
They have to go through the hoops though.
And go through the whole process again to show us their site plan.
And we have it now to where they, um, have to apply every, each year, but it's an unlimited in the number of times they can apply. So that way, um, you know, just make sure that all the connections and everything. So that's, that's the way that it's set up right now is they just reapply every year. But they can reapply as many times as they want.
Okay.
So I have some comments and questions. So on page one, where you have definitions, you can strike the word means. So you've got mobile food unit means, cause it's a definition. So you don't need to say means for all of those definitions. And then I was curious on page two, oh, three oh and oh, four oh. So the city manager or designee, is that just template language that goes with something like this?
Well, it's something that we're starting to move toward with any changes to the code that we make is to simply put city manager or designee because, um, the city manager position is specified in the charter. So it's definitely not changing. But, um, my position, for example, used to be the city planner and is now the community and economic development director. And so we're trying not to have other labels because they may change depending on how the organization needs to change. And so city manager or designee, it's, it's mainly going to be designee.
Right.
That's the issue. And so whoever is designated as part of the city organization to handle that task.
Okay. And then on page three, under oh, six, oh, E, um, about the NFU in a public right of way. Can you give an example of that? I don't quite see what that is.
Sure. So suppose you have, uh, a food truck, like any of the one, any food trucks that you've seen. That's a, you know, perhaps not, one that's not a trailer, but is a, uh, a van of some sort that has a window on one side. And suppose it parks on the side of the street in the downtown and opens up their window and signals that they're open for business. Anybody walking by can get a sandwich off of there or whatever. They're fully allowed to do that. And we don't regulate that at all because they're not hooked up to power. They're not hooked up to water or sewer or anything. They're completely self-contained. And frankly, we don't really want to control that. Uh, if, as the only real hindrance that they are in any way is they might have a parking issue. So as long as they're following parking regulations, they can go ahead and operate that way. And right now in, um, in a lot of our downtown, you have, you're supposed to move every two hours or so. So that's going to impact, you know, they're only going to come during the lunch hour or something like that. Or there's some places where you can park longer than two hours, but you still have to move every, uh, every two days or something like that. And so that's temporary enough that we just didn't see if it was necessary for us to even get involved in that.
I like what is being said. Just another question though. But let's say that they have now discontinued their business. Do we have a time of removal?
So, uh.
You know, let's say, for example, they haven't operated for two weeks, one week.
The, let's see. So I think we have, again, the, the permits were good for what, a year? Uh, and then could be renewed. Um, so if, just thinking through, we would, we would probably, if it's within that year and the permit is still good and they haven't changed anything in their site plan, then I don't think there would be anything that we would do to stop them from reopening. Now, if the property changes and there's completely different people involved, well, then they're, they're going to need to get a permit as well because, because they're, they're changing, everything's changed. Now their, their, um, process for renewing is probably easier because it, that it's already been done. And they, all they had to do is just submit the same plan that was submitted before, but, um, there's not really, I guess we didn't really think that it was necessary to come down hard on anybody who stopped operating and then started up again. Mainly because if you think of it as like a restaurant, there's plenty of, of commercial kitchens and restaurants in town. They're closed for whatever reason, and then later opened back up again. And they didn't have to reapply for, for any use permit from the city. Either they just had to make sure their health department, um, permits were in order.
I just have one more comment on page seven. So again, we talked about that each permit terminates after a year. So A one. And then the next, um, section is kind of redundant. Permit renewal, that permits may be renewed. I don't know if that's redundant or not.
Which, what's the code of section?
On page seven, A at the top, number one, and then the next section.
I think my page numbers are done.
It's one, seven, seven, five, one, four, zero.
Okay. Four, zero.
On page seven.
There you go. Okay.
I guess it's not really redundant because the first one says terminate after a year and then the other one says renewed unlimited number of times. Okay. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay.
When it comes to forms and applications, Angela's always pretty good at having everything with a checklist. That makes it easy, very easier.
It tries. The more I have for people to look at and check off, the more I have to repeatedly tell them what they're going to need. So I try to be as thorough as possible.
Is there a reason why an event sponsored by the city is exempt?
Um, it was the same idea as, as any other farmer's market or other event that, we already have a process for special events and, um, a fair amount of planning that goes into those. And they're all temporary. Uh, they don't last for very long. And so, um, we, we put that in there. They, they really wouldn't. The intent of this is to cover permanently established, um, operations. And so any kind of event, it just isn't really necessary. We called that out specifically just to make sure that, anyone who is doing business with the city, usually in those events, we want to attract more food truck. We want to be as easy as possible for them. And so we just want to make it clear that this is definitely not going to be a problem.
In, in the events, uh, verboots through the city's programs, is there an associated timeline with those? Like no vendor shall be set up for more than seven days.
So within events, you, you have to fill out a special events permit, um, which I, I'm the one that regulates those. So, um, you have permits and like, for example, um, Harvest Festival. They have to apply, um, to be a, be a vendor. They have to show proof of licensure. And then the actual health, uh, department actually comes the morning of Harvest Festival to make sure that all of their licensure is there. And so they are, they can only be there during that event and then they have to go. But they, um, specifically only because I know Harvest Festival back and forward, um, they have to apply to be a vendor for it. And so they are on our vendor list and that's, but anybody else, it's the same process. They're part of the application. You have to list your vendors. There is an actual vendor list on there and you have to put your vendors on it. It's the same thing. Jamboree has to fill out the same application. They list all their vendors on it. So it's the, it's the same type of situation because it's a temporary. But there still is provisions that they have to do in order to be a part of that. So.
Something to keep in mind, and I, I think this is important just to get out in public and make sure people understand. If you're having a food truck come to your house for a party.
Right.
This does not apply to that.
No.
That's completely exempt. Um, it's not an issue.
That's why I was wondering if there was a, you know, if we could assign a calendar portion, like if you're going to be there for a period greater than seven days or.
Well, there is a part that says you can, you can, if you're, you can operate with, for no more than two days within any thirty day period without, uh, without a permit.
Yeah. Oh, six, oh, A, um, says an MFU may operate within, uh, Sweet Home City limits for no more than two days within a thirty day period without first obtaining an MFU permit.
So, um, and, and we, I mean, that, that number is that we just picked two days arbitrarily. So something that's temporary is really the important thing there. I think mostly two days, we're thinking that, well, assume they don't move and they don't go dump their waste. They're not going to last much longer than two days without dumping. So kind of how we arrived at a, a smaller number. That's certainly open to change. But we want to make sure that nobody thinks we're trying to regulate their party. You know, you're certainly more than welcome to, to have that operating for your private event.
So my only recommendation is that we might change two days to three days only because of covering a long weekend. If someone were to set up in an area that allowed them to park or that period of time that it could be set up for a long holiday weekend.
For that matter, four days might.
Yeah. I mean, just something.
And the other, the other, um, idea behind that is because right now you have, um, if you're parking in a right of way, you have forty-eight hours to move before you get cited. And so that was the other kind of, it goes along with the same thing. But this is different and they would have to give it, um, you know, we could look at it a little bit differently if they wanted to be there. I don't know. That's up to me.
I think you can extend the, you can extend, the, the thing is, is you can extend how long you allow them to operate. And that doesn't mean that they can park anywhere they want because they still have, they're still going to have to follow all those rules. That's a separate ordinance. So I, I don't, I really don't see anything wrong with expanding, um, the allowance for how long it can operate without a permit. As long as it's clear that it's a temporary use. And so I think anything less than.
It meets the parking requirement.
Frankly, anything less than a week is probably still fine, um, when it comes to that purpose. It's just a matter of what, what amount of time is reasonable in your minds. We can certainly adjust as.
The two days makes more sense now that Angela stated forty-eight hours, you know, that you need to move before you're cited.
But for example, if, if it's, if it is somebody who makes a deal with a movie theater or, uh, or one of the other businesses and comes into their parking lot that's off the city right of way, the two, the, the two day parking limit isn't going to apply. You know, how long should somebody be able to park to, to be allowed to operate there before they're required to get a permit to be there more or less permanently?
Yeah.
So I, I think there's certainly reasonable lines can differ on that, but, um, I think there's flexibility here that if you'd like to change it.
That's, that's kind of why I was looking at the, the three days. If somebody wants to come in and partner with the business for a long weekend, whether they were having like a little tiny mini festival, but still on their own property, but could not operate more than those three days in a thirty day period. Okay.
Yeah. And the, and the, the two days for the code compliance is for public right of way only. And so if they're on someone's private property, I mean, I, you know, I agree, you know, we could adjust that two days.
Yeah, I've just.
I'm more for, I'm more for two days, but I could be swayed for three. I really like three.
So the, the two areas that I'm hearing of, of desired adjustments so far is on the, you take out the language that the wheels are not to be removed. We can just strike that in entirely. Um, if you wish, I don't think it would materially, um, be a negative on this. And then the amount of time that someone can operate without a permit. So are there any other areas you'd like to see modified from the draft?
And I'm, I'm not completely opposed. I mean, Commissioner Wood brought up a good point too, that, you know, it'd be nice if they were quick and easy to be moved. My only thing is, yeah, a lot of them aren't handicap accessible with their window heights, but it would be a little bit more on the front end side. So, I mean, I, it's hard to make that a little more vague, but I don't know how you would do it.
So there's the two there. So if you're talking about the wheels, so number three is shall not have the wheels removed. And number five is shall have inflated tires. So if we remove, so we would need to remove both of them if.
Yeah. And the thing is, is either both of those could be covered in shall remain operable and able to move.
Yeah.
Right. And then, yeah, cause I know.
Any, anything removed should remain on site and in working order.
They just take them off and they sit underneath of there.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah. I think that's makes sense. And I think also for the landowner, um, or the property owner, it saves them from, oh, a food cart that parks there, takes their wheels off and then never comes back. Or exactly. And then, exactly.
Yeah.
So I think that gives a little protection to the property owner as well.
Problems for every landlord.
Oh, yeah. So if I'm hearing, then you, you want to.
So we're fine with wheels coming off.
The wheels may be removed, but. Wheels may be removed, but must remain on site?
Right. Just like anything that's part of its towing.
And then we can remove the inflated tires part.
Yeah. Okay. Because if it's got wheels on it and the tires are flat, you can still tow it.
I think that overall. Where Angela has done a excellent job of putting this together.
Absolutely. What is our next step?
I'm excited to see where this goes because.
What's our next step in the process here?
So tonight is the.
We need to taste test every boot.
Right. Should we add that to the ordinance? Planning Commission must, samples must be delivered to the next planning commission meeting. You know, the, the process is whatever, if you uh. Recommend a, a provision, an ordinance for adoption to the council. Then it would be, um, it would go before the city council, have a public hearing for them for. Any questions that they might have and for the public to chime in. And then based on their actions, they, they would either, if they approve the. The ordinance to, to go forward, our, our charter requires that an ordinance be read three times. At, um, and so this would. Usually at the public hearing that they, that the council has, it'll be read that, um, that night. And then there would be two more readings after that. So there'd be three city council meetings that it would be read out and then. And then it's thirty days before it's effective at that.
So you're looking at four months, assuming.
Sure. Um, for our purposes tonight though, um, whatever corrections or changes you would like to make, this is the time to discuss those. And then um, in your, if you wish to make a motion to recommend adoption to the council, you would need to um. Simply add as amended to your, um, and indicate what amendments. If you indicate the amendments that we've discussed and that, uh, the consensus of the commission is agreed to. Just include that in your motion so that um, we can make those adjustments and take it to the council.
Before we go too far along. I did have a question down here. And that's thinking in terms of the current coffee huts or similar businesses in town. Of course, those are mostly drive-throughs, but.
Those are permanent structures that are covered by building code. They're not mobile structures.
They've gone through the permit process.
They, they would not be.
But they don't have restrooms.
They don't, but they also don't have seating areas. So they're, um, they're completely drive-through. So these, this code, uh, does not envision any mobile food units that are drive-through only. They're a walk-up.
Specifically.
Yeah.
So I thought of a new profession. My ancestors come from the land of Holland. Where a lot of people live on their freight boats. And there are grocery store boats. They come and sell food. So next thing we'll have is somebody on the lake that has a little grocery store booth and. And so refreshments to people out on the lake.
You get enough houseboats on the lake, I'm sure.
Hey, I mean, you got a food truck.
We'll have a food court out there.
Just slow you where I'm starting.
Unfortunately, the vast majority of the lake is outside our city limits, so.
Yeah.
And have a jurisdiction.
Mobile, uh, floating food pods.
Sure.
Right now.
If it brings people to Sweet Home, I'm all for it.
Be the first one. Started trying.
Any other changes that you'd like to see to this draft?
No, I, I like the idea of, of omitting those two parts in the MFU standards. To where they remain all materials and remain on site. And I'm kind of partial to the three days on the.
On that, can we, we could get some direction from the commission, from the rest of the commission on whether you prefer three days or, or more. That we're, we're specifically talking about the exemption seventeen point seven five zero six zero A. Right now it says an NFU, an MFU may operate within the city of Sweet Home City limits for no more than two days. Within any thirty day period without first obtaining an MFU permit. And so uh, the suggestion is that it would be three days instead of two days. And so if anyone has any thoughts on that, we, we'd just like some clarity of, of what you'd like to. Seventeen point seven five point zero six zero A.
It's on page three.
Three of ours, yeah.
So I think I'm, I would be in, uh, a supportive of changing it to three days. Thinking more about if someone's having a food truck come in, that um, they might want them the day before. They have them there so they can set up and get everything ready for those next two days that they may be there. And then on the second day, that's cleanup and move out.
Right.
And it just gives them a little more time um, to be organized. And Memorial Day.
That's, that was my thing. It's Memorial Day, Labor Day.
Yep.
Fourth of July, depending on where it lands.
Yeah. That Monday or Friday is always a holiday.
Yeah, for Thanksgiving.
Yeah. Well, I mean, yeah, you, and like, like Blair said, I mean, it could be four days. So you're allowing an extra day for setup and tear down on a three day weekend.
And we just have to.
For a week, for the whole week.
Yes.
Okay, so this could omit setup.
It could be parked for a day without even operating and it wouldn't even.
So three days of operation.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Yeah, if we're not counting setup and tear down.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, under this, I don't think that setting it up would really qualify it when they are open for business.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions or concerns?
No.
So we'll need to go through the.
Yep. So do we want to go ahead and, and close the public hearing?
You still need to do in favor opposition, even though we don't have anybody here.
Oh, yes. All right.
And then you can close it.
Excuse me. So we did not have any applicant testimony. Other than that, that was provided for us by the staff. If we have any other proponent testimony in the room, this would be the time that you would come forward and speak. Those of you wishing to speak in favor of the application or um. I think that application legislative amendment. As there are none, any opponent testimony, those wishing to speak in opposition of the amendment. Any neutral testimony, those wishing to speak not in favor or against, just wishing to be heard. As there are none, we will close the public hearing at seven. Twenty-eight. And final discussion amongst the planning commission.
Angela's already done that portion.
That is correct. And so if, uh, if there's no further discussion or questions for staff, we would look for a motion.
I'll take a crack at it.
I make a motion that we recommend approval to city council, uh, file number LA twenty-two dash zero two. With the following amendments. Seventeen point seven five point zero six zero exemptions. Item A. That the. MFU may operate within city limits for no more than three days within a thirty day period without first obtaining an MFU permit. And a second modification seventeen point seven five point one one zero. Item A three. Wheels can be removed if kept on site. Does that sound correct?
Removing five.
And then strike five.
Strike number five.
I would second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? There are none. So.
Let's have some food trucks.
Is on its way. Um, in, in the, um, as amended, are we also. Correcting the, striking the word means from the definition.
Okay.
Perfect. I really think it's kind of a, a destination drive-through town in the summer.
Yep.
It's going to be something that's going to slow people down. And.
Well, and it'll be interesting to see how this trend continues.
Yeah.
Because I enjoy going to Tomlin Brewing in Lebanon. But they don't have as reliable, as you know, reliably as they used to, but. I don't know how much of that is seasonal. So it'll be interesting to see how that, how that operates this next summer and. And whether this um, is more of a fad or is more of a thing. So.
Well, and it may be all it needs for someone to test, get their toes a little wet into the scene of Sweet Home and decide that they need a bigger, more permanent location.
Maybe during the winter, if they came to us, well, to the city and proposed putting up a big tent. Where people could gather indoors with their food. Would that be something?
Sure. I, well, I mean, that's, there's room within the ordinance for that to some degree.
Okay.
I, have you been to Tomlin Brewing?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because.
We love it there.
And they're covered entirely with a structure.
Yep.
It's, even when it's raining, pouring rain, it's.
Yep.
Perfectly fine to.
I was at a, a pod in Portland. That was like a little neighborhood restaurant thing that was permanently there and it was used year round and was just part of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
There was one I visited in Bend and I was, one of the trucks was closed and I was disappointed they were closed because it was a. It was a British double-decker bus. They had been converted to be a, and I think they had seating inside the bus.
There, there's one.
They had a kitchen and seating in there.
Wow.
Yeah, there's the grilled cheese bus. You can go buy the baby cheeses. It's very good, actually. They have a frying, uh, frying Dutchman as well.
Yep.
We'll see.
All right. So moving on from application LA twenty-two oh two, we've got some findings and discussion points for our carport code discussion.
Yeah. So the commission tasked staff to kind of look into this a little bit more and look up some research, a little bit of information about the surrounding neighborhoods. But I first want to go back to the discussion that Mr. Victor brought up and then the article in the newspaper. So just so the count, uh, the commission is aware, so. Carports and open storage are two very separate things. So um, the issue of people storing stuff under a carport, that's considered open storage and that's actually a code compliance. Issue as well. So um, when we're considering carports, we need to separate the two, um, because they're too separate. Just, you know, kicking out a carport is not going to. Necessarily cure the open storage. So I just wanted to, before we get into the research, just make sure everybody is aware that those are two different things. So. I went through our code. Well, okay, I went as far back as nineteen ninety-eight. I didn't think I needed to go back any farther than that. And the requirement for garages and carports was in the ord, was in the criteria. That far back. Um, I didn't think I needed to go any farther than that since it has been in there for that long. So, you know, at least twenty-five years. I put my little note in here. Some of the veteran commissioners may remember the reason behind it. I don't know if anybody's been on the council that long. So the other thing I did is I went and researched eight different cities surrounding us. So we went, um, I looked at Lake Oswego, Lebanon, Albany, Halsey, Junction City, Jefferson, Stateon and Corvallis. None of them have a carport requirement except for Lebanon does have, it require a garage or carport with manufactured homes. And they have criteria. And that's the other ones that I kind of looked into. It was kind of a manufactured home. They had criteria of how it had to match the manufactured home. However, they don't have a requirement pertaining to um, the construction of them with their development. One thing that I did also. And that was I was looking something else up. So when we were going through our code review for the new code, um, our consultant did recommend, these are, I. In his notes that he gave us when we were doing the amendments. He did recommend, um, he made a note for the R two and R three zones. He said, the commission may wish to consider whether a garage or carport is necessary. He did not put that comment in the R one, but he did put it in the R two and the R three. So that was also something that he recommended. So as far as that's um, the history of it, I don't know the reasoning behind it, however far back it was, but. That's what I found in our code and then in surrounding cities. So. And then at, at this point, you know, it's, you know, how the discussion is up to you all and if there is a um. Text amendment or a code amendment that you would like to bring forth, whether it needs to. How do they, the process, either the commission brings it forth or the community.
If, if you wanted to move forward with a change, you could direct staff to, to, um, to draft the, draft an ordinance reflecting that change and. Essentially, um. Schedule a public hearing and a public notice for that to be reviewed as a legislative amendment.
And the omitting of the carport in the R, R two and three. Probably has something to do more with the fact that there's apartments. In, in those zones and then it becomes more of a logistics thing as far as fitting all the carports.
Well.
Per unit on.
No, because the, is the, this, this requirement is only for.
Manufacturing.
Single-family homes, correct? Or.
In duplexes.
Single-family homes and duplexes is the only thing. So it doesn't apply to apartments anyway. The, what, what was likely, what, what may have been the reason for suggesting that in the R two and R three zones is that. The single-family home lots in those zones are smaller. They're five thousand square feet rather than the seven thousand in the R one zone. So that could be part of the thinking. I will say that when it comes to your standard stick-built, single-family home. I don't know the last time we received an application for one that did not have a garage. And I don't think it's because it's required. I think it's just that if you're building a home, you're shooting yourself in the foot if you don't have a garage. Preferably an attached garage even. And so if this was to be removed, removed, I. Highly unlikely that you'd see any um, stick-built homes affected at all. The main thing that's going to be affected is going to be in manufactured homes by this period. So with manufactured homes, it's a little more complicated because they are. The building code for manufactured homes um, prevents them from being easily modified. And so if someone wanted to attach. A carport to a manufactured home that wasn't originally designed for that. It's going to be very difficult for them to do so and have it pass building code. They're only going to be able to have either a separate garage or a separate carport that's self-standing or self-supporting. So, and those are the ones, the, the main. Main buildings that are going to be affected by whatever is decided is going to be manufactured homes.
How much of an issue has this been other than what we heard last, or a couple of weeks ago? Or is this the only incident?
That's the only person that we've heard from.
And do we consider changing our development code for one person?
That's. So I guess I don't feel qualified to make that decision. Or our appointed and elected officials to decide, but. I. This isn't something that, that to my knowledge, anyone else has talked to us about.
Have other developers or builders balked at it at all since nineteen ninety-eight?
No. I will say also, um, we, if you recall, our new code does have more stringent requirements for manufacturer homes. And we felt strongly about them that we actually adopted them prior to the rest of the code. And so they were, they went into effect a year or so before that. And. The, if you look at the number of manufactured homes that were put in in twenty twenty-two as opposed to twenty twenty-one, there was a huge drop-off. Twenty twenty-one, we had about sixteen or so. And then in twenty twenty-two, we had two. So just the requirements that we had on many, and those, those more stringent requirements were primarily focused on energy efficiency. And, um, and meeting building code for those, current building code for energy efficiency. Essentially what that did was the result of that change was that fewer manufactured homes came here as part of their second life. The, the manufactured homes that we've seen since. The, the manufactured homes that we've seen since have been manufactured homes that were purchased new specifically to place on, on a lot. So when thinking about, you know, kind of thinking out the future and thinking of homes that will be affected by this, you're, it's going to be people who want to have the, the, a less expensive home that you can give with a manufactured home. And whether you want to, you're already going to have to have one that's fairly new because of the more stringent requirements. We want to have them also have a requirement on a carport or a garage or their, next to their manufactured home. Those are, those are the people who are going to be affected. Now, Mr. Victor had approved plans for manufactured homes that were all put into place or applied for before that change in code happened to tighten up the building code. And so whatever change is made to the code, could, he, he would either have the existing code applied as he applied and was approved, or whatever change was made. And so if a change is made to it that is less stringent, he could have the benefit of that. If a change is made that's more stringent, he basically would have the choice of either sticking with the carport that he's approved for in the first place or having whatever more stringent requirements. That's kind of some context for the situation.
So I see two issues. One is, do we want a different standard for manufactured homes versus stick-built? And then being clear with the public about carport and open storage.
So we, we try to have, most of the reasons for regulating manufactured homes in a different way than stick-built homes comes from the, basically the look and feel of a manufactured home compared to your typical stick-built home. Because, I mean, they, they do a great job these days of, manufactured homes are much better quality than they used to be. And they, and architecturally, they're much more attractive than they used to be. It's really amazing what you can do with the same kind of footprint. But they still tend to follow that same footprint of a, because you're trying to maximize space when it comes to something that you move down the highway. We, most of the other requirements we have when it comes to roofing materials and siding and things like that, nobody has a problem complying with at all. The garage, you know, the, the main difference is going to be appearance-wise. You, you have a manufactured home without a garage next to a stick-built home. It can obviously look like a manufactured. But the garage is probably a a much larger burden than any of those other regulations. Because it's, it is going to, it does have a bigger cost. Carports, obviously, you can put up a carport fairly, or fairly cheaply. So that's why it's always been carport or garage. But nobody builds a carport anymore unless they're either required to or it's part of it, or it's with a, with a manufactured home.
Do you have, oh, sorry, Henry?
If we have a manufactured home and if we remove this requirement for a carport, they still have the option to put in it there, including the metal structures that look like they don't belong.
At that point, it just becomes a building permit. It's just part of their building permit. It's not a planning code requirement anymore. It's just a building code. They just have to follow. It has to be a permanent structure that's anchored, not movable. Other than that, that's where it would fall under if it was removed from planning code.
Based on observation and experience, I would agree that an awful lot of the carports that are open are filled with whatever.
And they're, they're, and they're all code violations most likely. It's a matter of whether we've been able to get to them. Because if you, if you have stuff that's stored in public view from that street, from the street, which all carports typically are, and it's not behind any sight obscuring fence or anything like that, it's, it's open storage.
On a related subject, we often see apartment buildings with balconies that are filled with household stuff.
And, and that's basically like their backyard or their front yard. If it's in view from the public street, you could, you could argue that that's open storage also. We haven't typically enforced it that way, but if we got a complaint, we probably would.
Well, I would be inclined to eliminate that requirement.
So my thoughts about this are about the intention behind why we decided to keep this in the code and why we want sufficient parking at all residents, especially new residents that are coming to see home. And to me, covered parking is not a luxury for a resident, especially in an area like this where we get frost regularly or they may need to be off the street. And having covered parking required at every new residence means that the city can say, you need to move your car off the street and into your, you know, designated parking area. If it's full of stuff, you know, that's one thing that the tenant or the owner of that property has to deal with, but it gives the city the ability to say, you have to move off the street. We're doing something. Like, we need to dig up the street. You still have a place to park. We'll make sure you can park, but that's your place. And if we allow people who aren't living at a residence to decide not to put those there, and then those tenants are without parking or have to walk to where they live or, you know, for whatever reason, because they don't have a specific designated parking spot, we've done the city and those people disservice. I think we could change it to a permanent carport structure. I think that was the main issue.
That's what it is right now. That's what it is supposed to be right now. It's according to.
So I, so maybe in our code be more specific because
Clarify also the, the parking requirement is still going to be in effect. You still, a, a home still has to
Two off-street parking spaces.
Street parking spaces that are still required to.
So the, the issue then that Mr. Victor brought to us was more that his carport structures were temporary and able to be moved by his tenants?
So they were not approved as that. They were approved as permanent anchored structures. They are not supposed to be able to be moved by tenants or by him easily. So they're not meant to be temporary structures. When they are approved through the building permit process, that's what they, that's what is checked off and that is what is approved. So not, not temporary structures.
Yeah, most of the reason for the anchorage is the uplift.
Right. That seems like it was dangerous to have something that could be moved so easily. Yes.
And I don't think I would even consider those boat and RV covers as carports. Just, aren't they like a kit that you assemble?
That's a fine line. Depends on the, depends on the, the, the size of the kit or the rigidity of the kit, you know. There's the, the pop-up kind of style that are similar to a pop-up canopy that you have.
These are just like the aluminum ones, aren't they?
But then there's the aluminum anchored ones that look just as clumsy, I guess, or just as light, but are permanently anchored. And those, those do go through the building permit process.
Pop-up ones aren't allowed. You're not allowed to use those as carports.
Yeah, okay. I just didn't think these looked much like a carport. They look more like a boat cover. Like you'd put in your backyard, not in your front.
Which are still technically supposed to be permitted.
They're, they're bare minimum yard.
Yeah.
So then really, to me, it seems like this is a non-issue.
Yeah.
If the carports that are in place on the discussed properties were parked, were permitted to be permanently there, then, okay, they're permanently there.
And he agreed to it as the permitting process.
What Mr. Victor is stating is that he thinks the requirement should be changed because they become an eyesore.
Not having to allow them at all.
For things.
Right. And that's the other issue of the.
But that's irrelevant, right?
Correct.
Is it relevant to this code? Yes.
I, it's irrelevant and yet it's relevant. It's irrelevant in that, yes, there's a different code that cut, that takes care of it. But it is relevant in that common example of open storage is people putting things in their carport and they need it there. And so does it, so does it, it, it attracts more open storage, yes. Does it excuse it? No.
But he, he said.
Still have to do some.
Well, and, and Henry's brought this up many times in other discussions about how many people use their garage for storage and don't keep their car in it.
Or their front yard or anything.
Yeah, it's sort of the way of the world these days.
And Mr. Victor said in his testimony that building a closed port would fix this problem and that, that's what he intended to do in the future. So I don't understand that, that there is a need to change the code because he knows what the solution is for his issue specifically. And it still leaves the option for other landowners and people building and manufacturing to be able to have a carport if they want one. And he can continue to build and develop and if he chooses, build garages instead.
And, and on that, I, I don't see an issue treating a manufactured home differently than a stick-built home because of the fact they do abide by different building code. They are not, you know, a manufactured home does not necessarily adhere to the IBC. When it comes to residential building, they have their own variations. The reason for the carport or a site-built garage is that it has to be a self-supporting structure. If the manufactured home was to be towed away, you can't put any extra bearing on a manufactured home. The only thing that can physically connect is the roofing and the roofing felt itself. So.
You, you can, just to clarify, you can do a, an attached carport to a manufactured home, but it has to be engineered.
Yes. Which is usually costly enough that it's a self-supported structure. So.
Yeah, the ones that I've seen have four posts still.
Yep.
But two of the posts go through the eve
Of the manufactured home.
Manufactured home. So it's technically connected, but it's not actually supported.
Yeah, you can't disrupt the envelope of the manufactured home without engineering.
So I think what, I think what we need is just a recommendation of what your recommendations are and how you would like us to move forward, how you would like staff to move forward.
Yeah, so we, we put this on the agenda as a discussion as it was, as was requested. Staff is, essentially, we've, we've done our part. Whatever you would like to see happen, just let us know. But if, unless you direct staff, otherwise the code will exist as it currently exists.
Kind of sounds like the discussion is leaning toward leaving it exactly the way it is.
Would it be a courtesy to send Mr. Victor a letter?
Oh, we, we certainly can notify him of the.
Discussion. I think that's, that's decent because he took the time to come here and voice his concerns and take a letter from us with just some respect for that.
We, we still haven't resolved the issue of the boat storage cover being used for garage.
Well, so
Or the open storage.
It may look like a boat storage cover, but it, it is, it does fit building code for a carport. And I guess the, I, we could look at the definition, what the definition of a carport is in the code and maybe beef that up to so that it has more substantial nature to it. But I, I'm not sure exactly how or how we would do that. That, but, you know, the, the structures that Mr. Victor talked about, if they remained anchored, would have fully complied with building code as a structure and not a temporary boat cover despite their.
And, and Henry, to your, what I think you're alluding to is the storage underneath them. So that actually, the open storage code, there is an ordinance going through city council right now that is beefing up the open storage code that you, open storage will have to be behind a sight obscuring fence if you're going to have it. So even in commercial zone, residential zone, so they, there is some amendments to that code going through city council right now. So that will help alleviate some of that.
I don't mean to be difficult, but a lot of these codes are not enforced in our community.
And there's good, we understand that and we try to enforce as much as we can. We only have one code, code compliance officer. And so when we, his activities are a mixture of responding to complaints and then doing his own patrol and, and I, and starting cases that way. It's amazing how much effort it takes to try to get people to clean up their stuff. That is just a, anybody who's a parent, I think, knows that, but they mentioned that on a, on a citywide scale and it's, it's a lot of work. There are other cities that have teams of code compliance officers that so many that they each have their own specific area of specialty. So you'll have the open storage team and you'll have the tall grass and weeds team and you'll have the shopping cart team. So we, we don't have that level of resources. We continue to deploy our, our code compliance officers best we can to, to remedy these things. Some of the hamsters that we've had is simply the culture that has arisen in Sweet Home and what people are used to. And the more people are used to things being done away, a certain way, the more resistance they offer when you try to get them to do otherwise. And so it, it's really frustrating to change, to change the direction of code compliance in the city because of a lot of issues that have just been allowed to continue for years and years and years and have blended into the background. One of, we're, we're trying to address some of this with code because there are some barriers that have been a, a matter of the code itself, where the code in the past, currently, if your open storage is visible from an alleyway, it's allowed, but from a public street, it's not. And, and so it, it's kind of ridiculous that you have to pay attention to what kind of street you're standing on to be able to enforce it. Likewise, private streets, you couldn't enforce off of those and shared driveways, you couldn't enforce off of those. We do have, we had a, the first reading in ordinance at the last council meeting that would change that. And it removed the alley exemption and it also added private streets and shared driveways to, to the code so that, for example, in a trailer park, you have a private driveway going through there. It's a shared driveway essentially for all those units. We weren't able to enforce on a lot of those units because it wasn't visible from the public road. Now, after this ordinance is passed, we'll be able to go in there and actually enforce, you know, the storage. So there is hope for things to get better. But we rely on people making complaints and making sure that, that we are, because those complaints help us determine what the priority is. That, that certain areas are very much an eyesore. But there's other issues that we run into where with either landlords that aren't active in the area or don't work with their tenants or bank-owned properties and things like that. We try to address those as best we can. So it's not a swift process. It's never easy when you're trying to get, when you, when you evolve private property, but we're, we're continuing to make improvements.
Blair, just to clarify, so in a rental situation, it is the landlord's job to enforce code on their properties that their tenants are renting. So if there was open storage that they did not like, that the landlord would be the first person responsible in asking that to be cleaned up.
So it's interesting, some, it depends, there's two different, there seems to be two different style of landlords when it comes to this.
Right.
Is there some landlords that don't try to enforce anything and they don't, because they know that if any code compliance action goes through the city, it'll eventually fall on them and they'll get penalized. But they, for whatever reason, don't make their tenants do anything in the meantime. And then we have other, we have another landlord that, at first I didn't understand what they were doing and then I realized what they were doing. We had another landlord that would regularly make code compliance complaints on their own properties. And at first, our officer was kind of confused because he's like, you know, this is all going to come back on you. Well, they know that, but what they're doing is they're gathering documentation to justify an eviction. And, and so it's, frankly, it's smart if you're a businessman that cares about how your property is being used. You can have that ammunition in your pocket. So, some landlords use it, some landlords don't.
Right. But it's within their power?
It is within their power.
And just also, when the code compliance officer sends out letters, he sends it to the tenant and the owner. So they both get the letter, so they both are aware. And, and like Blair says, we do have quite a few that owners live out of state and so it takes him a while to locate them.
Well, and sometimes the city letter means more than the landlord asking, so I can understand why someone might want to go that way. But I just wanted to clarify that they can take that step without the city intervening.
And it's not easy to be a landlord these days. There's a lot of estate requirements and there's a lot of, it's really hard to evict people if you get the wrong tenant in there. And so I really feel for a lot of landlords. But I don't think this needs to be a barrier like this.
What is the process when you have somebody that's not complying?
For, oh, for open storage or anything like that?
Or anything like that.
So the process starts with either identifying the case, right? Identifying where the issue is. So either a complaint will come in about a property or our officer will notice a problem on his patrol. And so first, there's investigation. You get a complaint, you verify is that the complaint is actually valid. He checks out the property, makes sure that, that it actually does violate the code. Makes sure that, looks at the actual language of what code is being violated to ensure that it's a real case. There's a lot of complaints he gets, often are things that he can't necessarily do something about. Because they're not, they may not actually be code violations. They just look ugly. So unfortunately, there's a lot of things that look ugly that aren't against the code. But assuming that it's valid, he starts by initiating contact with the offending property owner or tenant. Whoever's there tries to do it in person to at least give them a verbal warning that this is an issue. Often, it's hard to actually make contact with someone, but it usually gives, he usually gives a couple of days to try to contact somebody in person. Next comes a, a letter that's kind of a notice of violation that gives them a period of time to correct the issue. And that's typically a two-week period that their people are given to correct the problem. Depending on the degree of the problem, sometimes more time may be given, but typically two weeks. And then after that, it proceeds to a, an actual violation citation where they, they're fined for the, for the violation. And that will go to municipal court, which has its own timeline unfortunately and takes up more time. The municipal judge usually wants to see the documentation that the city has and, and wants to make sure that people are given adequate time to, to address the issue. And most of the time, when people show up to the court, they, he gives them, he gives them additional time and then will drop the fine if they correct. And then there's, so they have another period of time for correction. And when they don't, the fine, those fines eventually build up until, and they stay on the property and they can be a lien on the property. We also have what, and so that's the, the fining process for code compliance. We prefer to get compliance first because we're not really out for the money, we're just out for everything to look better. Separate from that is abatement. And abatement is essentially, what that means is it's the city going up and going ahead and cleaning it up without the property owner being involved. And there is a process for doing that. It starts the same way. But the property owner is given notice that if you don't correct it in this period of time, the city is going to go ahead and clean it up. And then the cost of that cleanup is going to be charged to you. And if you don't pay it, it will go as a lien on your property. Abatement is, and then once, once, if they don't comply, you know, eventually it goes as a lien and then someday they'll sell their property and the lien will come back to the city and the city will get its money back. With, usually with interest, if we've done our paperwork right. The problem is, you have to have the money in the first place to be able to clean that up. And depending on the level of cleanup needed, there are insurance requirements for the company that, that does the cleanup and a lot of hoops to go through that make abatement fairly costly. And we try not to use that if we can avoid it, but we are using it more and more, especially in egregious cases. The problem is, is the funding. We, last year, I think we had some, some, some abatements that were more than $10,000 in the cost to actually do that. And so, that burns through our budget really fast and we just don't have the money to clean up multiple properties like that.
And a lien on the property could be years away before you'd ever cut them.
Yeah. You may not see it for a very long time. And depending on how the property is sold, you know, sometimes if it stays within a family, you may never see it. It just gets passed on and passed on without any actual transaction.
I'll make one more comment and probably not have the evening drag on. But since we are all on the planning commission, we are more aware of so many things in our community. I'm pretty sure that the rest of you are probably like me. I drive around town and I see, that's a code violation, that's a code violation. We see them all over. Maybe we should take a little bit more of an active role.
I, and I thank you for, for making that comment because that actually fits with something that I, that I was meaning to bring, I meant to bring up and haven't yet. We hear all the time, we'll have a complaint that'll bring up a property that we weren't even aware of. And the complainant will say, this has been going on for years and I have talked to the city over and over and over again about it. And we're like, but I didn't know that you talked to us about it. And then with more research, we find that, yeah, they complained about it, but they complained about it five or 10 years ago. And, and it, and it may be it got cleaned up then, but then the person re-violated and we didn't know about it. That's the other problem is that we have repeat violators. But it's, we, we try to explain to people all the time is, we, we really need your input. Because if, if you don't make the complaint, it will blend into the background and your neighbors will get used to it. And, and we'll have other areas where we are getting complaints that our code compliance officer will be busy focusing on those. Because those are what people are, are voicing their concerns about. And so, we always appreciate getting, don't feel bad about submitting a complaint. Feel good about submitting a complaint. That's what we want people to do. We have people who are like, well, I didn't want to turn anybody in. Okay, but do you want it cleaned up? Because that's really the only way it's going to get cleaned up. If you submit, depending on how you submit the, a code, a code complaint, it can be completely anonymous too. It's, it, it, it's exempt from public records rules. So, nobody's going to be able to demand to know exactly who turned them in when their violation is out in the open, present for anybody to see anyway. So, it's, we really welcome the complaints. The main thing we ask is be detailed when it comes to the location. Get an address, be as, as, as clear as possible when, when it comes to the actual location of the issue. Because too often, we get kind of vague. On the corner of such and such, there's this. And it's not clear what property you're talking about. But please submit those as much as you can because, well, the other issue is people think that if they complain about it on Facebook, that it'll get done somehow. No, that doesn't happen. We don't have a, a line to Facebook all the time for our code compliance. We need you to actually submit it for real. The other thing is, a lot of, you know, planning commissioners or city council members or other committee members may think that because it was brought up in a public meeting, that that somehow counts. Ethan doesn't go to these meetings and doesn't listen to the minutes. We don't have time for him to do that. And so we do need to, to have that, that paper trail of the-
It's a process that people need to follow.
And, and we do have a paper-
Ethan Rowe is our code compliance officer.
Will you turn on your microphone? We do have a paper form up at the front counter and I think you can complain, you can issue a complaint online also.
Right. You can go through our website, you can, you can call us, you can, you can email me and I'll pass it on and it'll get into the system. But having it documented is always better than not. And like I said, it can be exempt from public records, so it can be anonymous.
And if you see that, that code that needs addressed, make that complaint. It could be a hundred dollar fix. And if you don't, it ends up being the $10,000.
Frankly, if I had a, if I had a violation in my front yard and I could have been warned before it got big, you know, to motivate me to do it, I'd probably rather be motivated to do it early than late. Because it can be, it's a lot harder to do later.
Do we maybe need to look at the definition of carport in our code? I think that's the, what we've uncovered is the, kind of the sticking point of this issue.
So would we have to revert back to definition of a carport according to, so let's, building code?
Okay, thanks.
Stationary structure consisting of a roof with its supports anchored and not more than one wall or storage cabinet, except due to gray wall and use for covering a vehicle parking space.
That is neat. And I would think that it would need like footings instead of just something stakes driven into the ground to hold it in there.
More than just anchored supports?
Yeah, I think that's covered in building code though of what they are and aren't allowed.
Building code and engineering for structure, some of the prefab units require-
This building-
A helical anchor or something as part of their kit.
And maybe we don't know-
Some cities have design standards for structures where there'll be certain architectural elements or, or otherwise that are actually documented in the code for people to follow. And that would, if you, if you wanted to address it that way, I think design standards would probably be the way I would recommend doing it within the development code. Because as Angela said, the structure itself is going to be governed by building code. The problem is, we don't have design standards for anything else. So it's going to look like we're singling out this one issue to have design standards.
It would. Okay. Well, I think that kind of answers the question then. One of these years. When we create design standards.
Yes.
Is there anything else we need to do on this or-
Carports? Not unless you wanted to move forward.
Okay.
I think discussion of, about subjects like this as they come up is super beneficial because it does-
We can refer back.
Yes.
Why, why?
We can understand why it is what it is. We can delve into that. So as it comes up next time, we have the background information to do it. I don't want to go as far as to say, hey, let's pick another item to talk about next time. Because I'm sure you have enough to do already. But I do appreciate your time in preparing some information and giving some background for us to look at so that we can better understand what we're doing as a planning commission. So, I do want to thank you for that. And I, I think all the discussion amongst the commission was productive. Even some of our little bunny trails that we went on were productive in the long run. So, I mean, it's all good discussion. Thank you. All right, so if we're moving on from our carport code discussion, we will just head into staff updates.
Applications, we don't have very many. We have a couple more legislative amendments. We have one on the agenda for the next meeting that was going to be the housing needs analysis. But we found out today we may need to continue that one, so we'll get some more information. We will still have to open up the hearing since I noticed it and maybe continue it. But we won't know until we have a further discussion this next week, so. And then down the road a little bit, I'll just kind of jump into the municipal code amendments. So we're working on still some of the amendments that we'll be putting together to bring back to you. There's not, well, there's a list. We keep finding stuff, so I'm just like, we just need to be done and get this in here and then we can do it again. One of the things I gave you all is section, section 17.64. I noticed, of course, because I'm going through it, the 17.64 online is all correct and the numbers are correct. But for some reason, the printed copy, the numbers were messed up. And so I printed you a new copy to add to your binder because I have a feeling the ones I printed off for your binder, somehow the numbers got reformatted. The one online is just fine, so I don't know why the printed one. So that's the only, that's why you have that one, is just replace it in your binder. And then other than that, I'm just going to slip. So, March 2nd meeting, I want to see if you are all going to be in attendance for that meeting. It's the first meeting in March. We'd like to do a little bit of a work session. We've got a lot of people that have just come onto the commission the last couple of years and then commissioners that have been here. But we would like to do a little bit of a work session, just kind of training. And I would also like to see if you would allow us to start at 6:00 instead of 6:30. Because it may take up, it may take two hours and then that way, we can get you out of here before 9:00.
Unfortunately, I will not be in town. And so, it'll be Angela having all the fun.
Just for that March 2nd meeting, I just, just going through the materials, I think it takes about, it's going to take two hours. And so I just, it would be- No, I don't have anything scheduled for that day. That, that will be the only thing scheduled for that day.
Well, I might have to stay.
So that's, yeah, that's, oh, and then we met, we're still forming the TSP committees. We will have, I thought I wrote it down. There, the first meeting will be in April. We haven't scheduled the actual date yet. It looks like it's going to be once a quarter.
Yeah, we have windows.
Yeah, we're still waiting. It's April, it's like the middle of the month.
Yeah, the 12th to the 18th of April was kind of the window that we're looking at.
Yes, we'll still have the meeting. Because even if we need to continue the public hearing for that, we, because I noticed it, we still have to have a meeting and we have, we'll have to open the public hearing and continue it.
More detail on why that will not happen that night. I got a call today from our rep from the state. And I haven't found out the details yet because I haven't managed to connect with him. But he apologized profusely that this had kind of gotten away from them and was off his radar. But they apparently have some, some things that they are concerned about with the comp plan amendment that's associated with the housing needs analysis that we've done. Some things that they think need to be included or that weren't addressed enough. I don't have any details yet on what that is, but he felt strongly enough that he asked if we could continue it. And so what they're asking is a month continuance by that time.
As, as long as we have a quorum, it's fine. That is the only thing on the agenda that day.
You open the meeting basically and then continue it and then close it.
I also, on the February 16th, we have a long-range planning session for schools, facilities. Kind of volunteered for that and we have a follow-up on the 16th.
If we can get enough of a quorum present though to continue the meeting for a month, that would be all we need.
Yeah, I would be out.
Hopefully, but I, well, not by the next meeting.
No, because it just got posted today.
Yeah, it did.
So. I don't know based on- I don't know based on timeline if that's something that we would do or.
They, they can reach out. The, the issue is that the pre, the seat we had available before was open to uh people that live outside.
Right.
But, but the city but still live within the school district. And I don't think we, we no longer have a seat available because you, you live in the school district boundaries but outside the city. Yeah, so um, so if there are any people that were interviewed, then uh, and that do live within city limits, then certainly they can be brought back.
That is all I have. And this, I don't know if you have anything else.
Alright, so if there's no further business, we'll go ahead and close the planning commission meeting for February second, twenty twenty-three at eight twenty-two or eight twenty-three.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, amen. Just enough sugar to keep me awake. Ooh, she got another red one.